Okay, good morning, ladies and gentlemen, council. I'd like to call this meeting to order. We have agenda in front of us. I'm just wondering if there's any additions to the agenda?
Yeah.
Yes, Councilor Cravieak?
I have an addition. And we'll put that under nine point six. There's nothing here on infrastructure, so nine point six point one, road allowance maintenance. Nine point six point one, road allowance maintenance.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Reeve and council. I do have one agenda item to add. It's item number ten point two zero, under correspondence Ronald McDonald House Taste of Home Gala.
Okay, thank you. Is there any other additions to the agenda? Okay. Seeing none, I need a motion to accept the agenda. As amended, thank you. Thank you, Councilor Cravieak, for making that motion. That council approves the adoption of the agenda with the following additions, nine point six, nine point six one, and two, ten point two zero. Any discussion on this? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. That's Carrie, thank you. Yes, go ahead.
Why is that not on?
I guess they told me that they're wiring for the new mics and all that stuff, so that that won't be on today. So we have to rely all on our on our tablets, all right? Sorry for the people out there. We usually have the big screens on, but they're not wired in today. I need the adoption of the minutes of regular meeting of council, July twenty third, two thousand twenty four, please.
All seen and ordered, I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Councilor Fedeau, for making this motion. That council approves that council adopts the minutes of regular meeting of council, July twenty third, two thousand twenty four. Any discussion on this? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. That's Carrie, thank you. Sorry, I'm used to looking up at the big screen all the time, too. Onto seven, seven point one. Good morning.
This is development permit application number two thousand twenty four.
Your microphone's not on.
Thank you. This is development permit application two thousand twenty four dash D dash two hundred for Marjorie Bouchard. The applicant is applying for a variance to section forty nine, keeping of animals, from two livestock to six horses on a parcel less than ten acres. The property is located northwest on the highway fifty five and Range Road four twenty one intersection, one mile east of the highway twenty eight intersection. Adjacent properties are a residential lot and quarter section remnants, one of which that has a multi-lot area structure plan that was adopted in two thousand and fifteen. The applicant would like to have up to six livestock on their land. They have kept two horses on their land in the past, which is fenced and cross-fenced. They have a barn and attack room and water pumps at three different locations on the lot. They purchase bales of hay as needed and have two different spots for different ages of manure. They distribute the aged manure to neighbors for their fields and their gardens. This lot is zero point one four acres, less than the ten acre, which does not have a limit on the number of livestock, as per section forty nine point four of the land use by law number sixteen sixty seven. Adjacent landowner letters were sent out on July thirty first, and we did not receive any concerns. Our recommendation for development application number two thousand twenty four dash D dash two hundred is refuse the request for variance of section forty nine, keeping of animals from two livestock to six horses, as it does not comply to section forty nine, keeping of animals. Alternatively, as per section forty nine point four five of the land use by law, the development authority may approve the request for variance of section forty nine, keeping of animals from two livestock to six horses, if, in the opinion of the development authority, the site is suitable for such, and it is determined that the additional numbers would not create a nuisance for the neighboring properties, with the following conditions: shall comply with consolidated public safety by law number eighteen twelve, shall ensure adequate weed control, and the maximum number of horses shall be six. Any questions?
Thank you. Yeah, Deputy Reeve, correct?
Yeah, I just was thinking, like, it's, this is almost ten acres. It's surrounded by agricultural land, which somebody could have, like, a hundred cattle and that, the rest of the quarter section going all the way around it. So it's, I don't see why we wouldn't allow them to have six horses on that piece of property.
Okay, thank you. Councilor Fedeau?
Yeah, it seems adequate enough, especially with the bales and everything else, but in the past, we've also had instances where it just hasn't been enough, and we had, you know, animal by law to be called for that, because these horses were starving and everything else. I'm sure this is probably different, but that's always sits back, sits in the back of my head, is the, you know, the animals themselves, that and that. Seems like there's nothing around it, and I guess if there is some sort of issues, they'll all pop up, but looking at the maps, it seems like it could work.
Well, just listening to how the, you know, the yard is prepared for horses and all the waters and all, that looks pretty well prepared. It sounds pretty prepared for, so, yeah, okay. Someone like to make a motion?
Yeah, I.
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, I agree with the two counselors. So I'll make council option number two to approve.
Okay. I'll wait till that pops up on my screen here. There we go. All right, thank you, Councilor Cravieak, for making this motion. That council approves development permit application number two zero two four D two zero for variance to by law number sixteen sixty seven, land use by law, section forty nine, keeping of animals, to allow six horses on a parcel less than ten acres on lot one, block one, plan one three two four thousand, within southeast twenty three sixty two six west of the fourth M, with the following conditions, one through three. Any discussion on this motion, gentlemen? Okay, I'm seeing none, I'll call for the vote. That's Carrie, thank you. Onto seven point two.
This is development permit application two thousand twenty four dash D dash two zero two for Loyer Hebert. The applicant is applying for a dog boarding kennel. The property is located two point five miles south of the village of Glendon on highway eight eighty two. Adjacent properties are quarter sections and remnants. The applicant would like to use an existing shop to board up to thirty dogs. They plan to start with ten pens and expand as needed. They will create indoor pens and outdoor fenced runs for the dogs. They would be the only employee, and they would operate from seven A.M. to eight P.M. daily by appointment. This location does not conform to the one thousand foot distance setbacks requirement from any dwelling on adjacent lot, as there is a house across the highway approximately eight hundred and seventy feet away. Adjacent landowner letter, letters of concern, oh, sorry, adjacent landowner letters were sent out, and we received no concerns. Recommendation for development application two thousand twenty four dash D dash two zero two is refuse the request for a dog kennel, as it does not conform to section fifty of the land use by law, requiring one thousand feet from the kennel to a dwelling on the adjacent property. Alternatively, as per section eighteen of the land use by law, the development authority may approve an application for a development permit, notwithstanding that the proposed development does not comply with this by law, if, in the opinion of the development authority, the proposed development would not unduly interfere with the amenities of the neighborhood, or materially interfere with or affect the use, enjoyment, or value of neighboring properties, with the following conditions: applicable building, electrical, gas, plumbing, and sewer permits are required, as per Alberta Safety Codes Act. No dog, including pups, shall be allowed outdoors between ten P.M. and seven A.M. daily. During this time period, all dogs should be kept indoors. The maximum number of dogs kept on site shall be thirty. In determining the number of dogs, pups less than six months old shall not be included. All dog facilities shall be visually screened from existing dwellings on adjacent lots. No building or exterior exercise areas to be used to accommodate the dogs shall be allowed within eight hundred feet of any dwelling located on adjacent lot. All permits issued shall be valid from the date of issuance, and shall be subject to cancellation by the development authority for due cause development. Oops, that's it.
You sound like me there. Good job. Yes, Councilor Fedeau?
Just have a question in regards to the home you're talking about, that's that's near. I'm looking at the map, the map doesn't quite show the neighboring home that's there. So when we look at the map, is it to the right when you're looking at it?
To the right, to the east, yeah.
Across the highway. Across the highway to the right.
Across the highway, yes.
Yeah, this is not much, actually, this is, seems like a lot further away than the Terra Merre kennels were on highway fifty five. There's property that's across the road from it, and also to the east of it as well. And there hasn't been any any concerns at all there, so this seems seems okay.
So if there's anybody that was going to be complaining, it would be that household that.
That is correct.
That Councilor Fedeau's talking about, and they haven't sent, they haven't sent no letter, they haven't phoned or anything, no bells ringing? Okay. Yeah, Councilor Cravieak?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Reeve. I'd like to make a motion to approve this as well, number two, thank you.
Number two, okay. Okay, thank you, Councilor Cravieak, for making this motion, that council approves development permit application two zero two four D two zero two on lot one, block one, plan two two two, one three five zero, within northeast twenty sixty eight west of the fourth M, with the following conditions, one through six. Any discussion on this motion? Okay, I'm seeing none. Let's call for the vote, then. That's Carrie. Thank you. Onto seven point three.
This is development permit application two thousand twenty four dash D dash two one three for Jonathan and Tanya Wiseman. The applicant is applying for a variance for their existing second approach onto their residential parcel. The property is located in the countryside multi-lot subdivision adjacent to the city of Cold Lake. Adjacent properties are country residential parcels and the city of Cold Lake. Administration was made aware of two approaches onto this residential parcel when the landowner applied for residential shop. A file review was completed, and it showed that there were no approvals for the second approach to this parcel. The south approach is hard-surfaced and was put in by the developer. The northeast approach was added for the house construction by the builders to accommodate the orientation of the house. The approach policy states that only one approach is allowed on a residential parcel, but applications for approaches beyond the maximum may be considered by the development authority. Referrals were sent to Infrastructure Services on July fifth, with no concerns reported. Adjacent landowner letters were sent out on August second, with no concerns reported. Our recommendation for development application two thousand twenty two twenty four dash D dash one nine one is refuse the request for a second approach, as it does not comply with the road approach policy three A point zero zero seven.
Thank you. Counselor Sipchuk?
I'd like to see them, I'd like to see us go forward, like, approve it, because that approach was there before they bought the home, and like the letter said, there's other residents there with second approaches as well. And this thing has been paved, has a paved apron versus their approach going into their home, and that's, I'd like to see us approve this, unless there's other discussion on this.
Yeah, Councilor Fedeau?
I don't think the second, the one that's not compliant, I don't think it's, I don't think it's paved. It's the one that the developer put in, is, so which one is is paved?
The southmost one.
The southmost one is paved?
Yes.
But then the second approach to the home is not?
That is correct.
Oh.
So which which approach are you guys seeing that you want to remove?
The planning and development doesn't have a favorable approach. We would discuss that with the landowner, of which approach they would like to keep if this was refused.
Okay.
Yeah, I I know the home quite well, and and I just assumed that was always the approach.
Yeah.
It's kind of, you know, I'm kind of conflicted by, we just had, you know, like, requests last, what, two weeks ago, about a second approach? We said we said no to it, but this was even before the house was even even built, it was there, and so, yeah, we're not building a new approach, it's just keeping keeping the the second one in, so, yeah, it's, it's a tough call.
Yes, Councilor?
So on that note, I'd like us to, like, we mentioned our last council meeting, where we denied that one, that we reviewed a approach policy. I'd like to see, make sure we bring that forward as soon as we can. But I'd like to pick option two, that we approve this.
Okay.
Make a motion.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Sipchuk, for your motion, that council approves the variance from policy number three eight double oh seven, road approach policy for existing second approach on lot seven, block three, plan one three two three five nine four, within southwest fifteen sixty three two west of the fourth M, as presented. Any other discussion on this motion? Yes, Councilor Fedeau?
Yeah, not much discussion on this one, but just, just as a, I guess, a question for for administration, is why wasn't this caught at initial inspection of of the build years back, when it was, this is probably eight years ago?
Thank you, that's a good question. Our building inspectors don't look at anything on the land, except for the house. So they would not have noticed that there were two approaches, or that that was even not correct.
Gotcha. Yeah, because it makes total sense where it is, where situated, where the approach is, so.
Thank you for that, Councilor Fedeau. Any other discussion or comments? Okay, seeing none, I'll call for the vote. That's Carrie, thank you. Onto seven point four.
This is development permit application number two thousand twenty four.
Just a, can I jump in here?
Excuse me, go ahead.
Counselor Sipchuk requested that we review the approach policy, and I agree with him on that. I wonder if we can make a motion.
We can, we can look it up and see if, let's talk around dinnertime and see if about it, all right? Thank you. Sorry, go ahead.
All right, this is development permit application two thousand twenty four dash D dash two one six for Goschen Quality Care Incorporated, Femi AJ. The applicant is applying for a change of use from a bed and breakfast to an institutional use for a group home. The property is located northeast of Range Road four twenty and highway fifty five intersection, two point five miles west of the hamlet of Cherry Grove. Adjacent properties are residential parcels and quarter section remnants. The applicant would like to operate a group home from children aged zero to seventeen years old. Caregivers work in shifts, providing care, coverage twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. There is a requirement for one caregiver for every three children, and there is accommodation for up to ten children on the site. The caregivers prepare and pack meals for the children who attend local schools and participate in recreational activities. The organization is operating an approved home in the city of Cold Lake. If approved by the municipality, they will need to, they will need approval from the fire and health authorities to enable an application to be made to the province. Adjacent landowner letters were sent out on August second, and we received two letters of concern. The first letter, they inquired to learn more about the type of group home, children in the care, the qualifications of the employees and number of the employees, ratio of caretakers to children, and impacts on property value. It was disclosed that the home is for developmentally delayed and differently abled children, not children with addictions or legal issues. The director of care is a former nurse, and the staff are experienced support workers with a required training for the caretaker's position. The ratio is three children to one staff, which will be four staff on site twenty-four seven, if occupants, full occupancy is obtained. Assessment confirmed that proximity to the group home has no impact on property value. The additional letter that I received goes on, they are concerned about destruction to their property and decreased property values. They were informed by the neighbor, and they said it was confirmed by a realtor and a lawyer. But, yeah, our assessment department was contacted, and they confirmed that there should be no changes to the assessment assessed value. Our recommendation for development application permit number two thousand twenty four dash D dash two one six is approve the request for an institutional use for a group home as a discretionary use, as per part six of the general regulations and part seven, section seventy-three point two of the land use by law, with the following conditions: shall be operated as per provincial approvals. The group home is for minors aged zero to seventeen years old, and maximum occupancy is for ten minors. We do have an adjacent landowner here that they may wish to speak, Morgan Haas and his daughter Kristin.
Okay.
If council wants to make a motion for them to speak against this application.
I'll make that motion, sure.
Okay, thank you, Councilor Fedeau, for making a motion to let these tax ratepayers speak, that their names are again?
Morgan Haas and Kristin Carter.
Okay. I'll wait till that motion pops up on the screen here, might just take a couple seconds.
Can I just ask that question?
Yeah, go ahead.
So as far as this group home, is it, so these kids will live there full-time, and the caregivers will live there full-time, or is it you drop them off in the morning kind of deal, and pick them up after, or where the parents kind of thing?
The children will be staying on-site, mostly full-time. There is a little bit of respite care for when their caregivers need a break, but the caregivers that are on staff, they work in eight-hour shifts. So they, the caregivers are not living on-site, but there is caregivers there twenty-four seven.
So this is a place that's open, that's operating in Cold Lake currently?
They have a group home in Cold Lake, that is correct.
Yes, go ahead.
How long has that group home been in Cold Lake?
Sorry?
How long has this group home been in Cold Lake?
I don't know.
Okay, we have a motion, Councilor Fedeau, that council approves Kristin Carter and Morgan Haas to address council regarding item seven point four, development application two thousand twenty four D, sorry, two thousand twenty four D two sixteen, group home. Any discussion on this, gentlemen? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. All right, that's Carrie. I'll welcome up Kristin and Morgan. Or just Kristin.
Good morning.
Morning.
Yeah, we showed up today, just to express our concerns in regards to the application for this group home. My father, Morgan Hawsey, sitting over there, I'm speaking for him today. He's owned the adjacent land since nineteen eighty-five, and his parents before that, for a long time. I don't know how long, long time, though. Our concerns are based around the health and safety of our families, security of our property, and the direct negative impact that this would have on my father's livelihood. As I'm sure you're aware, this property has already been running as a bed and breakfast for many years, and has not come without issues to our family. We've had many occasions where the customers have tried to gain access into our family home, instead of the bed and breakfast, in all hours of the day. As a result, this has increased the cost to our family by having to add increased security, signage, gates, et cetera. But more importantly, this has created a sense of unease on our own land. In the conversations I was having with Christie, in our emails there, we were told that some of these childrens do, in fact, come from problematic homes, and are, we are concerned that some of the problem family members will follow them to, follow them to the facility and cause safety and security issues to my family and our property. Our family home was, has already been broken into in the recent years, and it took the police greater than one hour to arrive on location. My father is sixty-three years old, with health issues, and he does not need any other further stress caused by an unsettling atmosphere or potential issues that could arise from this group home. Although we were told that there would be no impact to our property value by the M.D. tax assessments, we reached out to multiple local experienced real estate agents, and they have confirmed that placing this government-funded facility next to our home will with certainty negatively affect the saleability and lower the value of our property. My father will depend on the value and sale of his land in future years, and this development will directly cause a negative impact to his livelihood. We also have reached out to our legal counsel, and should this development be approved and progress, regardless of the fact that this would have a direct negative impact on my father's livelihood, the potential to further decrease my father's health due to increased stress related to the safety and security of his family and property, we are prepared to continue to dispute this development with our legal counsel. We do believe that there is a need for this kind of facility in Cold Lake or Bonneville, but we believe it should not be in a residential area as such, but in an already properly zoned area of the city, which does not affect anyone's livelihood, that is depending on the resale of their value, and should be closer to properly, should be closer and in a properly zoned area, proper to, sorry, closer to amenities and in a properly zoned Our real estate agent asked us to seek out that, okay, so we looked at the tax and land assessments that show no change in value from a like scenario, but we would like to know if you have any recent resale values from these homes, because they pulled ones from multiple districts, and they show that one close to this type of facility actually do sell for quite a bit lower than ones further away. That's all I really have to say.
Thank you, any questions, gentlemen? Yes, Councilor Fedeau?
Yeah, just for clarity, thanks for coming up. So in regards to, you're saying the bed and breakfast, we're trying to gain access, like, what do you mean by they're trying to gain access to your to your dad's place?
It, most of the time, it seemed to be just a simple mistake, that we share the same driveway, and instead of going to the B and B, they would go to their home and try to get in the home. It seemed honest mistakes, but they have had a break and enter, and not sure if it was associated with that, or who knows these days?
Yes, especially nowadays, when everybody's so conscious about, you know, like, the theft, it does make somebody, yeah, it's, I totally get it. Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, well, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, Councilor Fedeau?
Just have one more question for for administration, in regards to accessibility from the group home to town. How is how is that done for the for the kids that are there?
I don't have that information, but I would assume a school bus for when they go to school.
Okay. I just seem like I don't have enough information to to really kind of make a proper judgment on on this one here. There's a lot of, for me, it's access to school, access to town, you know, I mean, the young kids, they want, you know, they want some activities done, and if they don't have proper access to town, you know, how is that going to work, right? They're they're going to be, you know, confined to four walls, right? I have very active kids as well, and and, you know, they're always, they're always going to town for sports, for this, for that, I'm just, that's just. to town for sports, for this, for that, I'm just, that's just, that has nothing to do with the application, but I'm just, yeah, for the group home itself is just something that I'm struggling with.
Okay, looking for a motion then?
I'd love to get some more information on this, is there a way to, to, I guess, shouldn't say table it, but to, you know, request more information about the group home itself? Or can we even do that?
If council wishes, you could table it. Another option you could do is add a condition to approve this for one year and then have it revisited to see if there were any negative impacts on the surrounding area.
Mr. Reeve?
Yes, go ahead.
If I may, if council wanted this brought back, you could make a motion to refer it back to administration for additional information regarding whatever specific information you're looking for and brought back to a future meeting of council as well.
It'll be back in, in two weeks from now?
You could request a specific meeting date or you could just say future meeting at your discretion.
Are we having a meeting in two weeks or?
When's our next meeting?
I'll forget the, do we?
Tenth?
Yeah, I would, I would love to bring it back for that.
Yeah, I think it's a good idea. I don't think giving it a one-year trial and then pulling it out after that wouldn't make sense to me because it's a lot of effort to put this in and it just doesn't make, I agree with Councilor Fideev, I don't think we have enough, we don't know exactly, so go ahead and make a motion to.
Okay, make a motion to table it until next council meeting?
To postpone it, yeah.
Yeah, postpone it until, sorry, cancel it. Postpone it till next council meeting.
Yeah, sorry, can, can you just be a little bit more clear for what type of information you would like brought back?
I'd like to find out what kind of group home this really is and the accessibility to it and the level of care needed for, for the children.
Well, really, if you had someone from this home here, because even in this letter, there's lots of questions being asked.
Yeah, nobody's there.
No, there's not really any answers.
Is there someone from this home here today?
Unfortunately, they had a, an emergency.
Okay. Well, I think then, yeah, I think we need to postpone this till September tenth, is it? Yeah, okay. We'll wait for a motion to come up and I think that's a good, good call.
You, you know, we all agree that, you know, there is a need for it, but is this a proper place for it, right? It's, it's accessibility and, yeah. Okay, thanks.
Yeah, on that information, I'd like to see that we find out how long they've been around and if, what kind of, if there's been issues going on that, so, yeah, that's good to do.
Mr. Reeve?
Yes.
Our secretary will cast the motion to your devices now, so you can just confirm the wording.
Is that good with everyone? Okay, thank you, Councilor Fideev, for making this motion that council refers item number seven point four development application number two zero two four D two-one-six group home back to administration for additional information regarding the operation details of the group home and plan to accessibility for the minor occupants to the city amenities and brought back to the September tenth, two thousand twenty-four regular meeting of council. Any discussion on this motion? Okay, I'll call for the vote. That's carried. We're gonna take a five-minute recess. All right, welcome back. We're gonna switch it up a little bit, we got a gentleman that has to get in a combine, so he's here for nine point six point one. And I believe that's Mr. Kravjak, Councilor Kravjak.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Reeve. I'm speaking with regards to the road east of township five-nine-zero and range road four-ninety-two approximately half a mile. Now, Richard Darji, who is here, requested that this road be bladed and I was told that this is an undeveloped road allowance by Mr. Bisbalco and Mr. Hogan, but the map shows it is a developed road allowance. And I can recall his father, Pierre Darji, requesting blading of this road every few years and I can recall twice that I, he called me, and this was in my first twelve years of council, I can recall twice and then he phoned to thank me. And he passed away five years ago and his son, Richard, who's taking care of the land there now, did not request blading of this road till this year, so again, every five And that's because road maintenance was not required for this road, it was able to pass through and, and he remembers, Richard is here, he remembers this road being bladed. He also said that this road was developed in the nineteen sixties and that's why it's marked on the map, so he would have access to his land east. Now, if you look at the pictures, you can see the overgrowth of trees there and those trees are not old trees, you know, they're young trees, so that gives me a sense that this road was developed. And also, Mr. Hogan said that staff have no recollection of this road being developed. Well, it was developed over fifty years ago, in the nineteen sixties according to Mr. Richard Darji here, so there would be no recollection and there's nobody in AMD who's been there for fifty years. So that's my presentation, I would like to, to make a motion, if you have questions, to make a motion to approve this, maintenance of this road. If you have any questions and you want to speak to Mr. Darji, if anyone, you're welcome to, you can make a motion if you wish to, or if you have any questions for me.
Okay, do you, anybody have any questions for Mike on this request? Yes, Councilor Fideev?
So, so the road allowance that's there, seen pictures of it in the email and it looks quite overgrown like you said, so who, who, who owns the property next to it, or is it just for access for Mr. Darji's?
It's access to your property, I believe, is that right? The, yeah, I believe so. Would you like him to come up and speak? He can answer better than me.
Okay, sure.
I'll make a motion, Mr. Reeve, to put Mr. Darji on the agenda.
Allow him to speak?
Yeah, allow him to speak.
All right, I'll wait for that motion to, well, we can get the ball rolling.
Sorry, Mr. Reeve, we just, we need, we didn't, I didn't catch his name, we need it for the motion.
Richard Darji, D-A-R-G-I-S.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Can you turn the mic on, please? Thank you.
Just one second, Rich. Mine doesn't, my thing does not want to refresh here, it just does not load. Okay, thank you, Councilor Kravjak, for making this motion that council approves Richard Darji to address council regarding the items nine point six point one road maintenance. Any discussion on this? All right, I'll call for the vote. Okay, that's carried. Okay, good morning, Mr. Darji, go ahead.
Good morning.
Hi, yeah, so my question was, so, so the road allowance, your request to get it maintained, is that because like you need access to one of the fields or?
Yes, we need, we need access to get, to get to the field, as it is right now, we need to go on to the neighbor's pasture or through his canola crop. One side or the other is quite difficult. The trees have overgrown, you know, overgrown, it's hardly passable with a pickup anymore.
So, yes.
And, you know, the, the road was built in the sixties.
Right.
But that's at the end of the correction line and the correction line turned south half a mile before the end.
So the last five years, you had no need to put access, or you get access in there?
We were accessing it with pickups only, if we needed a semi to get in there, we would go through the neighbor's pasture.
Okay, Councilor Slupchak?
So how long is this road allowance?
How long?
Yeah.
Half a mile.
And what kind of maintenance are you looking for on this?
We're looking, we're, we're not looking for a whole bunch, we're looking to get the trees, the trees shaped, piled up or mulched and maybe a grader to fill in the potholes. And where the potholes are, if they had a load of gravel, we'd be good for another fifty years.
And another question is, so you, so any access to your quarter, how about, you must own one on one side, the other one?
There's access to, to, to neighbors as well.
So the other ones probably would utilize it as well then to get, gain access to their land properties?
Yes, correct.
Any other questions? You have any questions for him, Mike?
No, I just want to make a motion, I suppose.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Darji.
Appreciate it.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I'd like to make a motion that council approves the maintenance of this road, township five-nine-zero and range road four-seventy-two half a mile east. And of course, like Mr. Darji said, it'd be nice to have it bladed and maybe put some gravel and the trees have to be mulched, he can get through with a combine or a big semi for cattle or grain and his father, so I'd be, he'd appreciate very much to get this, get this approved by council and he's only requested a blading like once every few years, so, you know, it's, it's been overgrown because nothing has been done, nothing was required to be done. Thank you very much.
Okay.
Yeah, I'd like to, I'd like to hear what Brian Bisbalco has to say on that, he's the guy in charge of the roads around here, so if you can come and give us, sorry, I guess you can't hear me in the back there.
Yeah, sorry, there's no speakers in the back, guys, we gotta talk a little louder. Go ahead, Josh, ask her.
Yeah, I'd just like to hear what you have to say about this whole road and, I mean, you're saying one, I'm hearing a couple different stories here, so I'm not really sure what to think about it. Obviously, we're not going to maintain undeveloped road allowances, so if it's, if it's an undeveloped road, then it'd be kind of contrary to our policy to go in there and do a bunch of maintenance on it, but if it is a road, then we, we should be taking care of it, I guess.
Okay, thank you, through the reef and to all of council. I'll, I'll preface the discussion by saying I'm indifferent to whatever council asks, you know, infrastructure services to do, we're just trying to work within the policies that we have. For all intents and purposes, this is, this is an undeveloped road allowance. I know Councilor Kravjak is gonna argue the fact that it's developed, we have miles and miles of this type of trail that's punched through on a road allowance throughout the MD that is just a, a grass trail, you know, trucks and whatever go down it, but we don't maintain any of these. We don't maintain any of these road allowances because they're just, once you maintain something like that, you have duty of care to maintain it, even if it is undeveloped. So the liability for the MD for, you know, for actioning something like this and then leaving it for the next ten or fifteen years because it just doesn't need it, it's, we have a duty of care to maintain the road once we, once we do that. So all of our undeveloped road allowances are not, are not maintained. A lot of them are leased, or sorry, licensed by landowners who want access, so they can take care of that kind of thing if they, if they so choose.
Has this one been licensed in the, like, last ten years or anything?
Through the reef, to Councilor Crick, I, I don't know, that would be a planning and development question. To my knowledge, it's not licensed at this time. So I, I, I don't argue the fact that back in the day, you know, it may have been bladed at times like Councilor Kravjak is, is suggesting, I, I'm not gonna argue that because I wasn't here. All I know is that I, I went down the road this morning, I took a video of the, of the road the way it is, this is not a developed road. And, and at the risk of sounding argumentative to Councilor Kravjak, it's, it's just, it's not a developed road, it's not one of the roads that, that we maintain, we haven't maintained it for a number of years or, or done anything to it for, for a number of years. It's been grown in, in order to address anything like, you know, it would take brushing all the way to the fence lines and then in order to get heavy equipment in there like the graders and that kind of thing, trucks to gravel it and, and actually maintain that road, it would be a, quite a costly thing and, and again, our, our policies are that we don't, we don't do anything to undeveloped road allowances, we don't maintain them. So again, I'm indifferent to whatever council suggests that infrastructure services do, I just need direction because at this point in time, I'm just working within the policies that, that we have.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, Councilor Kravjak?
Yeah, thank you, but the map shows that it is a developed road allowance, but it wasn't maintained because there was no need to and also Mr. Darji said he can recall that it was developed in, in the sixties, so that's over fifty years ago, sixty years ago, and there was no need, he was only going through there with a heft and now he requires bigger equipment, so, so it is a developed road allowance, it's not an undeveloped road allowance, it's developed, it's been done and you can tell by the trees that they're not that old, so you can tell that at some time it was developed because it's fairly young, young brush out there, so I, I would like you, council, to pass this for Mr. Darji, thank you.
Any other questions to Mr. Bisbalco? Yes, Councilor Slupchak?
Yeah, so he, Mr. Darji mentioned that there's other property owners on both sides that will probably utilize it for access. It's a good thing that his neighbor currently allows him to go through his field, but what happens the day comes when that neighbor sells his land and the next one won't allow this access?
Through the reef to Councilor Slupchak, yeah, there are, there are a couple of acts or approaches off of that, that road allowance, absolutely. Further to your question of what if somebody sells the land and they don't get access, council has already made the, we've already had the discussion and council's already made the determination that we don't, we don't provide access to landlocked quarters either. So that again would go against what, what council has, what council has, you know, given a direction to infrastructure services for, is that we don't provide access to landlocked quarters. And, and again, to Councilor Kravjak, absolutely, at one time, somebody punched the, the brush out of that road allowance, no different than the, the miles and miles of road that we have throughout the MD that are exactly like that. Somebody took a cap, punched out the road allowance and Somebody took a cap, punched out the road allowance, and, uh, and left it as such.
The M D, the M D did it, yeah.
So it, but again, it's punched it out, but, uh, was never maintained, and, uh, a- again, I, we'll, we'll take direction from council. We're just working within the policies that council has set out right now, so, um.
Yeah, he needs access. It was, it was developed. It had to have been developed by the M D, not private person.
Yeah, go ahead, Darje.
So if, uh, we went ahead and said, yes, we want you to maintain this road, what does that look like exactly? So you, you go in with the brushers and clean it up, and then you'd have to build a whole new road there? Is that what is being, is that what's on the table here, or?
Through the reef to Council Scarsen, uh, I would suggest that that's what we do, uh, because we have to build it to a certain standard. If industry came and said they wanted to use that road to access a, a well or something like that, we would make them build it to our standard. I don't think we should be asking something of, of one and doing something different ourselves, but, but again, um, we take direction from council. I'll do however, uh, you know, whatever type of maintenance we want to this road. My suggestion is, is that if we're developing it, we develop it to our standards like we would ask for anybody else, or from anybody else.
So, sorry, can you, and you said what it's half a mile long?
Correct, it's, it's a half a mile length.
So what, uh, like what cost would you put on that then?
Uh, to, to the reef, uh, to all of council, our typical road rebuilds are about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for a half a mile of road, of gravel road reconstruction to, uh, a class six road standard.
Cause it's just, looks like a clay, like a, like a muddy old whatever right now, right? It was never really built that properly or?
Through the reef, it doesn't look like it's been built. Uh, there's no ditches, there's no anything. It was, it was cleared, and, uh, and, you know, probably at some time they made a clay base on it or something. I, again, I, it's been so long since it's been, like Council Kryvjak suggested, in the sixties. Um, it, it's tough to see what kinda base would, would have been there, but there's no drainage, there's no, uh, there's no crown, there's no anything in there, so. Like I said, it's, uh, it, it would have to be a, a road construction to develop that road.
Yeah, uh, Council Kryvjak?
Thank you, Mr. Reeve and Mr. Vespolak, but, uh, he doesn't need a, he just needs a trail, so in the meantime, all we need to do is to blade it and, and do some mulching for now. That's it. And if council doesn't want to, uh...
Excuse me for one sec. Uh, Mr. Savidge, I'm gonna have to ask you to refrain, please. Thank you. Okay, go ahead.
Lost my train of thought.
That's okay.
If council wants to develop this road at a later time, fine, but for now, all he needs is access. To do is combining there. And all he needs is to get a, a grader to blade the road, get rid of the ruts, and to mulch some, mulch some trees. That's all he needs for now. And whether you want to put that on the road building list at a future, uh, year, that's up to council. I mean, but as far as I'm concerned right now, that's not required. Just a blading and some mulching. Even gravel will not be required for now. So, but if you guys wanna put gravel, fine. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, uh, Council Fideev?
Yeah, so how wide of a trail do you need for a combine? I mean, is it a new combine that requires a quarter mile of width? I mean, some of these blades are, some of these blades are pretty big, right? So I'm just wondering about access and, and right liability. We're gonna get in there, but then is there gonna be damage to the equipment?
Sorry, uh, through the reef, uh, to Council Fideev, if we were going in there to, to mulch it or brush it, we would brush fence line to fence line, the twenty meter wide, uh, right of way. Uh, there's no use sending a mulcher in there to do, uh, you know, three feet on each side. Uh, if we're gonna brush it, we'll brush it and open it up. Um, that's, that's what has to happen.
Fence line to fence line.
And then, again, again, um, the, the multiple requests we've had for this in the past, we're, we'll have to, I'd ask for council's direction to bring back the policy so we can, uh, adopt this procedure, uh, for future requests, so that they don't always have to come back to council, cause we have, we've had many, many requests in the past for this same type of, uh, of, uh, you know, call it maintenance, to just open the road a little bit and so somebody can get access. We've had many requests on that, uh, and, and turned down, just because, so I would be bringing back the, the policy so we can, uh, adopt this direction if this is the way council wants to go.
So how many miles do you think was requested in the last year or so?
Uh, to the reef and all of council, I know personally that we've, uh, rejected a half a dozen in the time that I've been general manager, not to mention the amount of, uh, of, uh, industry requests that we've just told them they had to develop the road.
The industry, Mr. Reeve, is a different story, but, uh, yeah.
Okay, uh, Deputy Reeve, Crick has a question here.
Yeah, I, I would love to see the M D go in there, just fix the road up so they can have access down there. My concern with this is there's, there's roads like this all over the road allowance roads, whatever you wanna call it, all over the M D of Bonneville. And if we go in, do one, then how many other people are gonna want the same thing done? So then, I, like, where do we draw the line, I guess? And that's, that's kinda what our policy is right now. It draws a line. And like I said, I'd love to go in, I'd love to see us go in there and just fix this up, get it done, be done with it, move on with life. But there's, there's a lot of road allowance like this that's got a truck track or a quad trail going into someplace, and I don't, we need to, I guess we really need to look at the policy before we just start approving this and then saying, saying yes to one person, no to another person.
Yeah, uh, Council Kryvjak?
Thank you, Mr. Reeve. How many others do you know of requests like this, Mr. Crick, that you've?
Off the top of my head.
How many others do you know?
Off the top of my head, I don't know of the exact number, but I can think of a couple in my area. I can think of a couple in my area where there's roads like this that people would probably like developed.
People have developed their, on their own?
Well, I don't know how the road's been developed. I can think of one, like, between Fort Gannardmore that I've driven my, my trucks through. But it's, it's clearly not, it's clearly an undeveloped road allowance, but if we develop this here, then why not go, we should clean that one up too.
But this is a, excuse me, but this is a developed road allowance, and it shows it on the map. That's the difference. And like Mr. Darje said, it was developed in the sixties. Thank you.
Yeah, uh, one sec, one sec, were you done?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, Councilors.
The road allowance you're mentioning, like, does it go to, to farmers' field? Are they gaining access to go into a field, or is this just going to, like, this is access to, what, three or four other farmers? You know, gaining access, and it's not like everyday traffic like an oil field would be where they're going into lease back and forth every day with heavy traffic, where this is gonna be used in the spring and then a little bit in the summer for their spray equipment. And I believe you're probably gonna need at least forty, minimum of forty feet clearance there, so. I think we're gonna have to bring this policy, take a look and see, like, why, we don't need to have build high-grade road just for access to fields. Like, I'm sure we can just maintain and keep the brush for them to go, and that's it.
Uh, yeah, Council Fideev and then Council Crick.
Yeah, I just, uh, the only thing that kinda stands, stands out in this one here that, that hasn't been requested in such a long time, that if there was three or four people that were accessing it and there was an issue for farmers to get to it, this would be, uh, asked for a long time ago. And we should have built a road. Uh, I mean, we, you know, we have landlocked, uh, we got one gentleman that's, uh, that's in my ward that bought a, bought a landlocked quarter for not a lot of money and wants us to develop the road allowance so he can build a house. So, you know, when you, when you, when you buy, uh, when you get the property for, for a landlocked price, and now the taxpayer is gonna be paying, you know, three, four hundred thousand dollars to get it developed, it's, uh, it's just not, not fair for the rest of them, so. But yeah, the floodgates are gonna open up and, uh...
I just wanna bring one more comment.
Uh, one second. Deputy Reeve?
Yeah, I was just gonna say, like, this is a similar thing to Council Fideev just said. I, I got a resident. I went out and looked at it. He wants us to develop half a mile of road so he can subdivide four acres off of a quarter. And there's, there's a road going right by there, but it's not, it's not developed road. It's, it's oil traffic just driving by. It's just the way it's been for a few years, right? So it's people, you can still get by there, but it's not a road that's developed to the standards. And I also think this is just, uh, we, what we really need to do to be prudent here is look at the policy. If it's, if we don't like the policy, if it's changed the policy, and then the administration can work within a new policy. But to prove a one-off here, I don't, I'm not seeing it really, I guess.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Reeve. Yeah, over the years, my first ten years, council has approved four half miles of undeveloped road allowance. And I can name you where they are. Dupree area, where now C N R L is building an extension to their pads there. I built, we built the first half mile, uh, the road to township six twenty-four. There was one, uh, uh, road, half a mile, we developed. We had to buy half a mile of land from a private person. And a private person sold that land and the, and then council approved, and we developed a whole, uh, half a mile because, uh, the person who was allowing him access before denied him access all of a sudden. He had cattle going through by his yard. He didn't like that, so we had to help the, the farmer out, and we did. Uh, council, uh, approved, uh, purchasing half a mile of road from this private farmer. We don't need a, a good road here for now. Just a blade and to mulch, uh, get the guy through, instead of him going through canola fields and, and opening and closing fences from others. And then, yes, I want to bring the policy back myself. Policy four eight dot zero zero eight. Uh, in the meantime, we've done these roads before, cause I brought them to council. If you have roads, bring it to council. And, uh, we can discuss that policy as well. But for the meantime, we need, uh, to approve this. I would hope you guys would approve this. Thank you.
Okay, any other discussion? We have a motion that I'm gonna read here, wait.
I'll have a question.
Yes, go ahead.
So I, I just, I would just need a little more clarity on what you mean by maintained on this road, because it's a bit different between what Brian's describing to as to what you're describing.
Yes, well, if council wants to, uh, rebuild that whole half mile, it can come back to council later to see if you approve it or not. But for now, he needs access. All he needs is a blade to get the ruts out, and also to do some mulching. That's all we need for now, is to blade and mulch.
Okay, Council Slipcheck?
Would you, uh, if this went forward to, uh, mulch and blade, what'd you look at in a timeframe for, to mulch this, uh, half mile on both sides, the minimum of fence line to fence line?
Just through the reef to Council Slipcheck and all, and all council, our, uh, our construction plate is pretty full. I would, uh, have to check with the team to see what, uh, equipment we have available. Otherwise, if it has to get done immediately, we would likely have to farm that out, uh, get a contractor to come in and, and do something with the brush. Uh, blading, we can, uh, we can do something with the blading, but if it's just a clay top road and we start mixing it up, I'm, I'm afraid that it's, it's just gonna become a bigger soup hole, but it's, that's, I'll, I'll do whatever has to be done.
Yeah, Mr. Reeve, it was bladed before and was never a soup hole. Was always good. And once every four or five years, it was done, and that's it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, uh, Council Slipcheck.
So, it, it looks like with the pictures, it's been a while since you've had access to, the owners had access to them quarters. We do, we don't necessarily have to contract all. I'm sure we could wait till the end of the fall or when our, we get us some room in our plate there construction-wise and do it ourselves. So I'm sure the farmer would be willing to wait out for that and still access, get, get access as he has earlier, but...
But that's probably, he's probably got the ceded quarters down there this year, and that's probably why they need the access, is what I'm thinking. What? Is that correct, Mr. Darje?
Yeah.
Yes, yes, correct.
You have ceded quarters down that?
Yes.
And how did you access them with the cedar? Through the people's fields?
The neighbor's.
Fields?
Through the neighbor's field.
Okay. Go ahead.
So come harvest, you could ac, you utilize the neighbor's field for now to do it this fall?
No, because he has crop there too now. We were in there before they had their crop, before they had their crop in.
Is this the first time you seeded that field in a lot of years?
Yeah, yes, it is. I, um, when we were going with semis in the past, we were going through, through the, uh, neighbor's pasture.
Yes.
And now that, you know, when, when we got stuck this spring with, uh, with pickup trucks, you know, the ruts are deep enough now that, that pickup truck will get hung up. And if you go beside the ruts, then you're in the trees.
Okay, all right, thank you. So obviously, you need this work done, uh, this fall, is what I'm taking from you, Mike?
Yeah, we, we think the combine will be going in there and probably by mid to third week in September.
Great, okay, thank you. Any other discussion or, uh, oh, yeah, go ahead, Council Scarsen?
When I look at the pictures, they're just, I don't, I just don't know, the brushing I have no issue with, but I, I'm concerned about what the grader's gonna do in there, because it, it just looks like, it almost seems like you're gonna make more of a mess if you go in there with a grader, right? Like, it's, yeah, it seems like just a more pasture land. I don't know, so. I don't know if that's the plan or what. I mean, once it's brushed out, can you get in and out with, with it just being brushed, right? I mean, you got big tires on, big crockers, right, so?
Yeah, but if there's great, I haven't been down the road, so I don't know, but there's, there's, how deep are the ruts on that road?
Uh, to all of council, I, I was there today, and, uh, there were a couple of spots where there were probably eight-inch-deep ruts, a short section.
Right.
I, I, like I said, I, I took a video of the whole half mile from the, from the, uh, from the developed road all the way to the end where there's a, a little turnaround. Uh, there were a couple of places where there was, it was just wet spots, uh, eight-inch-deep ruts-ish, probably something like that. Um, there was a couple of spots like that.
So a guy could dump some pit run into these holes and, or not, not the way to do it?
Uh, we could dump something in there, uh, you know, to try to bridge the, the soft spots.
Right.
If that's, if that's what it takes, but the second you disturb that crust, uh, with a, uh, with a, with a grader, you're just opening up for more water to, to gather unless you're gonna seal that whole road.
Right.
But...
Okay, I'm gonna, any other discussion? Cause I'm gonna read this motion.
Yeah, I have one more.
Yeah.
We can see the, the, who's, how's people voting, so I wanna ask for a recorded vote on this, please.
You want a recorded vote?
Yeah.
I gotta read the motion first.
Sorry, just, again, that kinda brings up something I've been thinking about too. Like, can you see on the video who's voting for what here, like?
Uh, so to council through the reef, um, the recording of the meeting is showing the display that you would normally see on the screens. You just can't see them in council chambers today, so all of the voting results are available on the recording. They're just not available on these TV screens today. Having said that, if a recorded vote is requested, we can certainly do that as well for, it would, and it would show in the minutes who voted which way.
Do you ask for a recorded vote before you make the motion or after you make the motion? I, I haven't had one for a while.
I'm, I'd...
Sorry.
I, I made the motion already, Mr. Reeve.
I don't think I read it though yet.
No, um, if you guys could just confirm the wording, cause we have since changed it during your discussion to what we thought would match more what, um, Council Kryvjak's intention was. So if you could just confirm the wording before it's read out to make sure that we properly...
What was my wording before? Do you have it there?
It's, it's written here. You want me to read it to you, Mike, or can you find it there? Okay.
Let's be just, uh, change the motion to that council approves the maintenance of the road allowance at township five ninety east of range one four seventy-two for a distance of point five miles. With, uh, one-time paths, with mulching? We don't need the one-time paths for mulching, do you? Or just for mulching, Mr. Vespolak?
Uh, yeah, just brushing. I, I would just put it to brushing, and, and if I could, I would ask for council to be specific in what type of maintenance, uh, is in this motion, because for us, typical maintenance of a road is not what we're gonna be doing here.
It's a one, it's a one-time thing.
Right, but if, if the motion says maintenance, our maintenance is, is specific on, on what we do for maintenance.
Do you, do you have that motion in front of you as well? No?
No, I don't.
Okay.
You wanna maybe look at hers and?
So after the point five miles, we can add for mulching, uh... So after the point five miles, we can add for mulching, uh, put some pit run and blading as necessary. I took that out here. So what's the motion now?
We just replaced mulching with brushing.
And did you cross out with the one time pass for mulching?
We did not remove one time pass.
So, uh, with mulching, uh, from fence line to fence line, you were saying? That's what we need? So instead of a one time pass, uh, put mulching from fence line to fence line?
Or brushing from fence line.
Brushing, sorry. Brushing from fence line to fence line?
Our, our use of the word one time was to imply that it would only be done once, not continuously throughout the.
Oh, for now, one time is good enough, yeah?
Yes.
Yeah, one time.
If you would like us to reword that so it's more clear, you certainly can. Just let us know how.
What's, like, with the one time pass for brushing fence line to fence line? Uh, and blading, uh, if required? And putting some pit run, like you said, right? Whatever.
Yeah, I, I guess for council, I, I'm just, I'm not comfortable with it because it's not to the standard that, that we maintain roads. But I'll, I'll do what I can to.
Well, do we need to touch the road is my question. I mean, once it's brushed, do you need to touch the road? I mean, you're driving the same vehicles through the fields, right? So I'm just worried too about that road. Once you turn it up, then you're gonna have a bigger slot hole if it rains or something. I don't know, without gravelling it and all the, everything that comes with it, right? Like.
Through the reef, once, uh, once sun hits it, it might dry it up a little better. Cause right now it's just completely enclosed. It doesn't see any, any sun. It doesn't dry up. So you could be absolutely right where it's, uh, once the sun hits it, it might be completely different, but.
Yeah, Ms. Walker.
Um, so I, I think that it's important for council to realize that they're setting a precedent here. And they're also, um, uh, creating a liability, a, a risk of liability situation for the, um, MD. So, um, keep that in mind. Um, this will open the floodgates.
Yeah, but, uh, Mr. Reeve, it's a, it's a developed road allowance according to the map too. And you can tell by the trees, it's been developed in the sixties or whenever. Thank you.
So because it's on the, you're saying on this map that it's shown it as a developed road? Yeah, I've seen the picture, but I didn't really know what you were trying to get at there.
I'm trying to say it's a developed road allowance.
So what, is it one of the red roads or?
The red one is.
Yeah, so why would it be red on the map then?
Uh, through the reef to, to all of council, we're suggesting that it was a, it was an error in when the maps were created. And I know councillor Kryviak will argue that. And, and again, I, I don't wanna seem argumentative, uh, to this. I'm, I'm indifferent to what, uh, what the outcome is to this. But, uh, I mean, we have, we have maps that have errors in them. Um, whether it's a name, whether it's where a building is located, uh, whether it's where, where a, a road is. Um, it's, it's, it's a mapping error because we do not have any, uh, anything indicating that that was ever developed, other than, uh, you know, the trees cleared on that road allowance.
So like some sort of documentation, you mean?
Correct. I, I.
Is that common though for roads from that era, like in the sixties? Do you have all those documents somewhere?
Ledger service.
My apologies. What was that?
I'm just curious if this is like a common issue with roads that were developed in the sixties? Is, do you have all those documents that say that they're developed? Or is this just one that was missed or not?
I've never had to deal with any of that myself, um, pertaining to roads that were marked as me, um, developed and were not. I've, I've never had that come up in my department specifically.
Yeah, yeah, Mr. Reeve.
Yes, go ahead.
I'm thinking councillor Slipcheck that there were roads built in the forties and fifties and sixties maybe that weren't recorded? Because there was, you know, uh, things were way back.
Is there any ditches or approaches on this road that you know of?
I, I don't know.
You don't know? Is there any, is there any, like you said, there's no crown, there's no ditches, no, it's just, it's flat ground, is what you're saying? Okay.
Correct.
Did you have your hand up?
Did you not mention that there were three approaches off this road?
I thought you said there was a couple of approaches off the road.
Correct.
Yeah.
There, there are.
Okay, as well as Ms. Walker mentioned that about liability. Well, I believe maybe these, this road was developed back then, but there was different standards then. So can't we have a different standard for access to agricultural land, uh, road development?
But that's our, uh, policy, like, like, uh, Mr. Bismolko and, you know, Mr. Kryviak has said, we need to bring the policy back, right?
Well, I'll just tell you right now that I'll, I'll, I'll be a favorite only if there's no, uh, grader involved. I think if you brushed it and seen what that resulted in, I'd bring it back and then bring it back after if you want.
Okay.
I don't, I think you, you know, that's kind of the precedence right there to say, once you start blading that up, you're, I think you have to go in with gravel and all that after, right? And, you know, so.
Okay, so the motion as it is now just calls for mulching. Okay.
You mean brushing?
Brushing, yeah. Thank you.
And take out the word blading? Okay. Well, wait for them to change that, then I'll read the motion. Oh, it's done already. Okay, thank you councillor Kryviak for making this motion that council approves a one time maintenance of a road allowance uh, at township road five ninety east of Range Road four seventy-two for a distance of zero point five miles with brushing fence line to fence line. And I believe this will be a recorded vote?
Yeah, thank you.
Um, any discussion on this motion? Yes, Deputy Reeve.
Yeah, I just have to say that I, I had a resident in Ward one asked if they could clear a few trees to get access down to part of the recorder. They were denied because it's against our policy. Uh, this is a little different. There's already ax, somewhat semi-access there. Um, but then we're also talking about a liability. We're, we're going down, we're gonna brush it. So as an M D, then we've, we've admitted that this is, we've done some work on this, this road allowance, road whatever we're gonna call it. But then we have, we're gonna have a road that's substandard there, uh, with eight inch ruts in it if we're not touching the road. So I, I personally don't think it's a wise idea, but whatever. It's, it's outside of policy for sure, so.
Well. Thank you.
I, I can't see why we're not liable right now with the way the road is. You got access. You can go in there with a pickup. So what's difference in the liability?
Well, it's, it's not really a, it's not a road right now as far as the M D is concerned. It's an undeveloped road allowance.
Those is developed.
Can I just ask one question to our people that take care of roads and developments? To clarity, like Lisa in the back, is that a developed road allowance or not? Sorry to put you on the spot like that. I just.
Okay, I'm not sure if I can answer if it was actually developed by the M D or not. It does look like it's been used. I'm not sure who would have started using it or not. I did check. It's never been licensed, so we've never had a license for it before.
It's not a li, it's not licensed then? And we've never had a license for it?
Correct, yeah, I did check and, and nobody has license that road allowance, so it is not something that's been licensed before.
Okay.
Yeah, but that would be a resident licensing, licensing it, right?
It could be, correct, yes.
Okay, yeah, go ahead.
So like all of our developed roads, do we have a license on those or not? Or they're just developed?
No, those would just be developed roads. And also, we wouldn't have a, a record of construction within a road allowance unless there was some, um, road widening or something that we need to register a road plan. But that is strictly just a sixty-six foot wide road allowance. So any development in there, I don't know. We would have any kind of record if construction was done by the actual.
But again, that's something that seems to be common for that era. Is that, can we agree on that? Yeah, I'm just, I, the only reason why I would move forward is because it does say development there. And we can't guarantee us that it's not a developed road because record keeping at that time didn't seem to be.
Correct. So if somebody had come to the planning department for a permit along there, we would refer that over to T and U because it's not up to our standards. We would not allow a development permit on that property until that road's been brought up to standards.
Okay. Any other questions? All right, thanks. That might have made it even muddier. So, uh, yeah. Okay, uh, gentlemen, did I read this motion yet?
Yes.
I did? Okay. Any other discussion? Okay, seeing that, I'll call for this vote. Okay, that's carried. Thank you. Okay, back to eight. I think we're going to eight, eight point one. Almost need a break after that.
Good morning, gentlemen.
Morning.
Administration has received and is presenting subdivision application two zero two four dash S dash zero zero five for council consideration wherein the applicant is proposing a boundary realignment between plan zero nine two five four zero zero, block one, lot one, and plan one one two two seven three four, block one, lot two, located in the southeast thirty-four sixty-three two west of the fourth meridian as shown on the map in your attachments as A. Notification of proposed subdivision was mailed to referral agencies and adjacent landowners with a deadline of July tenth to submit concerns to be considered at today's council. No concerns have been received regarding this application. I would like to let you know that at the time of the print of this, um, application, I had not yet received, uh, communication from the city of Coal Lake. Uh, since then, I have, and I do believe that you've received the amendment to condition number one, um, with the condition from the city of Coal Lake. So if I could have you just take a quick look at that before I go through the rest of it, I would appreciate that.
Is that eight point one, this one right here, obviously?
Um, the condition, I'll go through those for us here. So the subject site is located on Range Road four twenty-two along the west side of the city of Coal Lake. The applicant is proposing a boundary realignment, uh, for a independent, um, property as per the, the diagrams that have been presented to you. Now, um, the city of Coal Lake does have an annexation on the property, but a condition of annexation was to allow for them to, uh, do the subdivision and move forward. So as per the conditions that are set forth, I will read through those for you. Um, so pursuant to section six fifty-five, the municipal government act, the owner developer contact the city of Coal Lake to obtain formal written approval prior to commencement of the new proposed approach and that the owner developer install internal road approach, including culverts and crossings to the proposed parcel to be subdivided at the owner developer's expense and to the specifications and classification of the municipal district of Bonneville and the city of Coal Lake. Number two, that the, um, owner developer install site specific services and again, at the owner developer's expense and to the specifications and satisfaction of municipal district of Bonneville and to the Alberta safety codes requirements. Pursuant to, uh, section six fifty-five as well, submission and review of a real property report or sketch plan submitted from the, um, an ALS to confirm that all structures located on the proposed parcel comply with the setbacks from all property lines. And then also, um, that we have the owner developer comply with all the sewage disposal requirements as per the Alberta self, safety codes act and part two of the province of Alberta public health act. That number five is that plan number one two 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 seven three one, block one, lot two, be consolidated to plan zero nine two five four zero zero, block one, lot one, prior to the registration of the new, newly proposed parcel and that the taxes to be paid in full. Are there any questions from council?
I don't see any. Oh, yes. Councillor Fadav.
Hi, thanks. Yeah, so this is basically just the realignment of, of the law plans because the historic aspect of how it was the first time around, right? So.
That is correct. Through, through the Reeve, um, the applicant is just, uh, applying for a boundary alignment to make a more uniformed parcel size, or parcel shape, rather.
Sounds good. Okay, thanks.
Any other questions? Someone like to make a motion? Councillor Slipcheck? Okay. Thank you councillor Slipcheck for making this motion that council approves subdivisions application number two zero two four S zero zero five for the boundary alignment between, between plan zero nine two five four zero, block one, lot one, and the plan one one two two seven three one, block one, lot two, located in the southeast thirty-four sixty-three two west of, uh, fourth meridian for Esther and Emerson Queembough and Paulette and Curtis Dahl Said or Side with the following conditions, one through six, and I apologize if I said that last name wrong. Any discussion on this, gentlemen? Okay, and seeing that, I'll call for the vote. That's carried. Thank you.
Thank you.
On to eight point two.
Good morning.
Morning.
Administration has received and is presenting subdivision application two thousand twenty-four S dash zero zero six for council consideration wherein the applicant is proposing to create a twenty acre subdivision, leaving a one, a hundred and thirty-seven point nine seven remainder parcel from the existing hundred and fifty-seven point nine seven acre parcel located at southwest twenty-nine sixty-one seven west of the fourth meridian. Notification of the proposed subdivision was mailed to referral agencies and adjacent landowners with a deadline of August sixth to submit concerns to be considered at the August twenty-seventh council meeting. No concerns have been received regarding this application. Um, for more detailed information on this subdivision request, please see the attached appendix B. Uh, this application was valued against the municipal government act matters related to subdivision and development. And the four hundred and twenty dollar application fee was paid by the applicant. Uh, notification of the decision will be provided to the applicant and applicable agencies. Um, and it is administration's recommended action that council approves subdivision application number twenty twenty-four dash S dash zero zero six to create a twenty acre subdivision from agricultural quarter section southwest twenty-nine sixty-one seven west of the fourth for Cyril Morgala, Beverly Topilke, Nicholas Morgala with the following conditions. Uh, number one, pursuant to section six fifty-five of the M G A and sections three, sorry, section three point nine three of the municipal development plan, that the owner developer install internal road approaches including culverts and crossings to the proposed parcels and to the remnant, remnant parcel to be provided at the owner developer's expense and to the specifications and satisfaction of the municipal district of Bonneville, number eighty-seven. Number two, pursuant to section six six, sorry, section six sixty-one and six sixty-two of the municipal government act and section three point nine of the municipal development plan, that if the subdivision is registered through a plan of survey, the owner developer dedicate to the municipal district of Bonneville, number eighty-seven, a five point one eight meter seventeen foot wide strip of land for road widening along the entire frontage of the south side of the proposed parcel and remnant parcels by registering a separate road plan. Or if the subdivision is registered by descriptive plan, the owner developer enter into land acquisition agreement with the municipal district of Bonneville, number eighty-seven for a five point one eight meter seventeen foot wide strip of land for road widening along the entire frontage of the south side of the proposed and remnant parcels. Number three, pursuant to section six fifty-five of the M G A and part one, section seven of the subdivision and development regulations, the owner developer for the sewage disposal, disposal shall install and comply to the Alberta safety codes act and part two of the province of Alberta public health act. Number four, pursuant to section six fifty-four of the M G A, that all outstanding property taxes be paid. I'm available for any questions.
Yes, councillor, uh, Kryviak.
Yeah, thank you, Reeve.
Yeah, thank you, Riff Kowalski. This is just two miles straight north of Frenchier, and it's straightforward, so I'll make a motion for number one to approve this. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Kravjak, for making this motion that council approved subdivision application number two zero two four S zero zero six to create a twenty-acre subdivision from agricultural quarter section southwest twenty-nine sixty-one seven west of the fourth M for Cyril Morgala, Beverly Topilke, and Nicholas Morgala with the following conditions, one through four. Any discussion on this, gentlemen? Yes, Counselor Fideev.
I just have some questions. So it looks like that part that's being subdivided is it's not part of the ag, like the finished field, so it's parts that's unclear. What kind of like land is that? Is that just brush or is that low-lying swampy land?
It's mostly brush. It does get a little low to the southeast section, but it is low-lying land for that part. The rest of it is mostly brush.
Okay, super. So there is a house on the corridor next to it?
That's correct.
Okay, sounds good. Thanks.
Any other discussion or questions? Okay, seeing that, I'll call for the vote. That's carried. Thank you.
Thank you.
On to eight point three. You know, I could have went from eight point one to eight point three, then to eight point two.
That's okay. I'll get my steps in today.
All right. Everyone's getting their steps in today.
Administration has received and is presenting subdivision application two zero two four dash S dash zero zero seven. One moment, please. There we go. And with this, the application proposes to subdivide an eight-acre parcel from a previously unsubdivided agricultural quarter section within southeast twenty-one sixty-two five west of the fourth meridian and consolidate to a fragmented parcel within northeast twenty-one sixty-two five. The subject site is located south of the Beaver River on Range Road four fifty-three and township six twenty-three. Administration did send out notifications to adjacent landowners and agencies and has received no further, or no, no concerns at this time. Recommendation is that council approves the application pursuant to conditions number one, that the owner developer install internal roads and approaches, including culverts, crossings and proposed parcel and to the remnant parcel to be provided at the owner developer expense and to the specifications and classification, or sorry, satisfaction of the municipal district of Bonneville. Number two, that the owner dedicate by way of caveat to the MD of Bonneville a seventeen-foot strip of land for road widening along the entire frontage of the east side of the proposed and remnant parcels. Pursuant to six sixty-one and sixty-sixty-two of the Municipal Government Act, the owner developer dedicate by way of caveat a seventeen-foot strip of land for road widening along the south side of the remnant parcel. That the proposed eight-acre parcel is to be consolidated to the fragmented parcel within northeast twenty-one sixty-two five. That a real property report would be supplied by an area, Alberta land surveyor to ensure the compliance with setbacks of all property lines. That the sewer disposal shall comply and be installed to the Alberta Safety Codes Act and part two of the Province of Alberta Public Health Act and that all outstanding taxes be paid. Any questions?
Yeah, Counselor Slipchak.
Yeah, I'm just curious. How did this little sliver of parcel come to be subdivided from that corridor like that?
Through council. If we take a look at the aerial that is attached as appendix A, it shows on there where we have the portion of the landowners. Since we don't have the aerials, I'll show you on my little map. If we take a look down in here, we can see where these properties are sitting right along the property line, making it non-conforming to that north parcel. The landowner has requested this little sliver of land to be consolidated into this portion at the top so that that would then make all of these buildings compliant with what the requirements are for the land use bylaw setbacks as well as the Alberta Safety Code requirements.
Well, I'll make a motion to approve this then.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Slipchak, for making this motion that council approved subdivision application number two zero two four S zero zero seven for an eight-acre parcel from agricultural quarter section southeast twenty-one sixty-two five west of the fourth M to be consolidated with northeast twenty-one sixty-two five west of the fourth for Jack and Lisa Schneider with the following conditions, one through seven. Any discussion on this motion, gentlemen? I'm seeing that. I'll call for the vote. That's carried. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, at this time, we're gonna take. Welcome back. We're on to nine point two point one. I was wondering when Matt was gonna come up. Here he is.
Morning.
Morning.
So today I have amendment to, to bylaw number seventeen ninety-six master speed rate bylaw. So on July twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three, the MD contracted the bridge inspection for, to conduct inspection on a single-lane bridge found on Range Road four eighty-five A, the Beaver River Truman Bridge. The inspector recommended that a speed reduction be implemented on the bridge to thirty kilometers as this would enhance public safety and reduce the structural impact on the bridge. Infrastructure Services believe that this is a best practice and requests that all single-lane bridges within the MD be slowed and signed to accommodate a thirty kilometer an hour travel speed at all single-lane bridges within the MD. And currently, signposted, currently, these are all signposted at either sixty or eighty kilometers per hour. So just to go through the four bridges that are in question. So the first bridge being the Aylesworth Bridge, second bridge being the Truman Bridge, the third bridge being the Tiller's Bridge, and the fourth bridge being the Lassard Bridge. So while the inspection was only mentioned at the Truman Bridge, administration has found that a speed reduction to thirty kilometers an hour on single-lane bridges is widespread throughout the province. And with three of our four bridges unpaid, a speed reduction may be appropriate for all of them. Additionally, changing all of them at once would maintain uniformly speeds throughout the MD while reducing wear and tear on these four bridges. So in the appendices, we do have the, the bridge inspection report. Appendix B is the location maps of the four bridges. Appendix C is the location photos. And then appendix D is the bylaws that would be changed in the, in the future. So what administration recommends to council is that council directs administration to draft an amending bylaw for council consideration to update Schedule A of bylaw seventeen ninety-six speed rate bylaw for the purpose of reducing speed limits to thirty kilometers an hour for the following bridges. First one being the Aylesworth Bridge, second the Truman Bridge, third the Tiller's Bridge, and the fourth Lassard Bridge. For council discussion.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Kravjak.
Thank you, Mr. Reeve. Mr. Yance, so how far before the bridge will this sign be put up?
Um, through the, through the reef to Counselor Kravjak. Through the discussions with, with Louis Gandolfi, the, the plan was to put it right in front of the bridges.
Oh, right in front?
Yeah, yeah. It wouldn't be, wouldn't be coming down the hill. That would be the same speeds that are right now. It would be just crossing the bridges.
Yeah, because I think the slower you go, the more impact it'll be on the bridge. The faster you go, cause less impact, no? You got it there faster.
Through the reef, according to the bridge inspectors, the slower the better.
Three of these bridges are in my ward.
I think most people slow down and take a look at the Beaver River or whatever creek they're crossing. Yes, Counselor Slipchak.
Just for information, I know I worked a lot in the northern, in the park where they'd put these single-lane bridges in, and they would even be down to ten kilometers an hour. They said the slowness prevents accidents, and they'd put it at about fifty feet in front of the bridge on each side. They'd always have the side.
Yeah.
And another thing is the Lassard Bridge, this is gonna, we're gonna have to put on the radar, like, like, we can't, like, slowing down thirty kilometers now on the Lassard Bridge. The Lassard Bridge is for safety. But we're gonna have to look at, redesign that whole road and put in a new bridge, a proposed road in there. I think that's gonna, this will put it back, put it in the forefront even more with this thirty-kilometer request. But I'm for this thirty kilometer.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, Counselor Fideev.
I think council just made the motion to go ahead with it, but if he didn't, I will.
Okay. Thank you, Counselor Fideev, for making this motion that council directs administration draft amendment of bylaw for the council consideration to update Schedule A of bylaw number seventeen ninety-six speed rate bylaw for the purpose of reducing speed limits to thirty K an hour for the following bridges. Which ones do you want to leave out, Mike? The four bridges that are before us. Any discussion on this?
Yeah.
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Reeve. I think people slow down anyway, like Counselor Fideev said. You know, so I don't think there's a need for this. That's just my opinion, but thank you, Mr. Yance, for bringing this up.
Okay, Deputy Reeve, correct?
Yeah, I agree with Counselor Krieger on this one. I don't see the need for it unless there's been a lot of accidents that I'm not aware of on the bridges. I don't think there's a need for it, really.
Thank you, Counselor Fideev.
Yeah, I think there's not a thing about a safety thing. It's about maintenance of the road and keeping them alive longer, right? It's just the stress on the, on the bridge. That's, that's what this is about. And these bridges, you know, we're gonna have to come into, you know, the conversation of, are we gonna, you know, rebuild these bridges or take them out later, right? So we're not sure. So the more we can prolong their life, the better it is.
Yeah, on that note, the Lassard Bridge is apparently a hundred, a hundred years old or a hundred and ten years old, so I don't think it's been an issue.
Any other discussion? Yes.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, a lot of those, those bridges have weight restrictions too, don't they? So you can't be overloaded going over them, right?
Pardon me, I didn't hear your question, Counselor Kravjak.
Like a lot of the bridges, like I know the Truman Bridge, they have weight restrictions on it, so that's for safety itself.
Yes, they do.
Any other discussion on this motion? Okay, seeing that, I'll call for the vote. This motion has been defeated. Thank you. On to nine point three point one. Yeah, one second. Deputy Reeve.
I just, there's one bridge in there that, that the inspectors did make a recommendation for, and I'm totally okay with making a motion to just do that one down to thirty for the bridge, but the other ones, I didn't see a need for it. So can I make, is that an order to make a motion for the one? I didn't wanna see all four just lumped in a category, but I'm okay with the one.
Well, you can make any motion you want. Deputy Reeve, correct?
Which, which one was the one there, Mr. Yance, that the?
Through the reef to Counselor Krieger, it was the Truman Bridge, so that would be the one.
And that one seemed like it was recommended for the, kind of the maintenance or longevity of the bridge, so I'll make a motion to be lower that one to thirty kilometers an hour, but I don't see a need to do the other ones.
Yep.
So I got a question asked now because this was recommended by an engineer's request and for further safety of the bridges, that? Like, what's our liability now on this that we didn't listen to a safety request? And I know from my experience that I've had working in the north and on bridges like this where I've had people lose their lives on them. So I, I, I'm just curious what this means to us now.
Yes, so, so reading through the reef and to Counselor Slipchak, in the, in the report, it did say that this would, obviously, for the Truman Bridge that we're speaking of, that was the bridge that was in the report and recommended the lower speed because of the aging of the bridge. And they felt that it would be safer for the bridge and probably expand the lifespan of the bridge. Now, if, if you're talking about liability and we did have a recommendation on the one bridge, it probably would be a good idea to, to follow that. Saying that, there was no recommendation on the other three bridges. It was just to the one bridge, the Truman Bridge, for the recommendation of thirty kilometers. As the RFD does say that the other speeds on the other bridges are ranging from eighty kilometers, that's the current speed of the road, there is no other speed limit reduction only on, to my knowledge, the Lassard Bridge. The Lassard Bridge on top of the hills, they do have a, a speed reduction of sixty kilometers.
Yeah, but, yeah, even the Lassard Bridge is pretty hard to hit sixty kilometers and then make the corner and blow up, right? It's, everyone slows down anyway on that one. Going south, you could probably open it up, but you'd have to, you'd be across the bridge before you're doing sixty, most people. Okay?
Mr. Reeve.
Yes, go ahead.
The Truman Bridge, as you're going north, there's a curve there too, so you can't be speeding more than thirty anyway, like, but, okay, thank you.
All right, we have a motion. Thank you, Deputy Reeve Krieger, for making a motion that council directs administration draft to amending bylaw for council consideration to update Schedule A of a bylaw, number seventeen ninety-six speed rate bylaw for the purpose of reducing speed limit to thirty kilometers an hour for BF seven two five one five Range Road forty-five A Truman Bridge. Any discussion on this motion? I think you guys just wanted to make a, a standard throughout the MD, is what you're saying.
That's right.
Okay. All right, I'll call for the vote. That's carried. Thank you. We are at nine point three point one. Is that correct? Yes?
Yep. Administration is requesting a decision for second and third reading on bylaw LU five seven nine in order to amend the land use bylaw, number sixteen sixty-seven for the rezoning of Lot one, Block one, Plan eight six two zero eight one four, part of southeast sixteen sixty-two one west of the fourth meridian within the hamlet of Cherry Grove from Hamlet Single Family Residential District, HR one, to Hamlet General District, District, HG. Bylaw LU five seven nine rezoning application was presented to council and given first reading at the May fourteenth regular meeting of council, and a public hearing was held on July ninth, twenty twenty-four. The current area of Lot one, Block one, Plan eight six two zero eight one four is approximately four point nine nine acres. The subject parcel is to be rezoned from HR one to HG. No concerns were received during the public notification process and no members of the public were presenting at the public hearing held on the July ninth meeting. Recommendations from administration is that bylaw number LU five seven nine being a bylaw of the municipal district of Bonneville, number eighty-seven, to amend bylaw number sixteen sixty-seven land use bylaw be given second reading.
Thank you. Counselor Fideev.
I'll make the motion for second reading, please.
Thank you, Counselor Fideev, for making this motion that bylaw LU five seven being a bylaw of the municipal district of Bonneville, number eighty-seven, to amend bylaw number sixteen sixty-seven land use bylaw be given second reading. Any discussion? Seeing that, I'll call for the vote. That's carried.
Mr. Reeve, I just wanted to point out for clarity as well, just since the screen's
Mr. Reeve, I just wanted to point out for clarity as well, just since the screens are not up and running, that, um, Councilor Skarsen is not voting on these items as well, just because he was absent for the public hearings?
On nine point three two and nine point three three three?
That's correct.
Okay, so the next two?
Just for clarity.
And also Dana, but Dana's absent, okay? On, oh, sorry.
I'll make a.
I'm asking for third reading as well, please.
I'll make a motion for third reading.
Thank you, Councilor Slipchak, for making a motion that bylaw number L U five nine, sorry, five seven nine be given third reading. Any discussion, gentlemen? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. That's Carrie, thank you.
Thank you.
Going to nine point three point two.
Administration has been working on a review and update of the Moose Lake Area Structure Plan to ensure that the plan is consistent with the Municipal Government Act, current practices, municipal policies, and community aspirations. As all municipal A S Ps are established by council through bylaw, administration is proposing bylaw number eighteen sixty-eight for second and third readings, which will repeal and replace the previous bylaw number nine, sorry, number nine twenty-three Moose Lake Area Structure Plan, which was passed in nineteen eighty-five. Part seventeen of the M G A allows municipalities to adopt area structure plans which have the purpose to establish the following guidelines within a designated area: general land use patterns, proposed sequence of development in the area, the overall density of population, transportation networks, and a general framework for municipal services. The review and update of the Moose Lake A S P was initiated in February of twenty twenty-four with assistance from the community consulting firm Urban Systems. Data was compiled and a draft A S P was completed for public engagement. On February twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-four, an in-person A S P area landowner engagement event was scheduled and completed. The amended Moose Lake A S P reflects input from the community focused on the following themes: one, to protect the long-term health of the lake by focusing on preservation efforts of the natural systems that protect the shoreline, biodiversity, and wildlife habitat; two, to promote compatible development by considering new development through the lens of potential impacts on not only the environment but also existing residential and recreational uses; three, to build on the to build on the expansion of the area by considering non-residential opportunities that are in line with the character of the area and establish a community identity. First reading of bylaw number eighteen sixty-eight was approved by council on June eleventh, two thousand twenty-four. A public hearing was held on July ninth, twenty twenty-four, where the parties present spoke to the proposed bylaw. The addition of general policy G point one point two has been made to the draft document since first reading and after comments received at the public hearing regarding environmental Once adopted, the Moose Lake Area Structure Plan will be distributed in accordance with the M D Public Notification Bylaw. It is administration's recommended action that bylaw number eighteen sixty-eight, being a bylaw of the Municipal District of Bonneville number eighty-seven, to adopt the Moose Lake Area Structure Plan as amended, be given second reading.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion for second reading.
Thank you, Councilor Slipchak, for making motion of bylaw number eighteen sixty-eight being a bylaw of the Municipal District of Bonneville number eighty-seven to adopt the Moose Lake Area Structure Plan as amended, be given second reading. Any discussion? Yes, Councilor Fedeav?
Yeah, just a question for planning development. There were some concerns presented by people on attendance and everything else, and there were some side meetings that went on. Have all those concerns been addressed?
Through the reef to council, policy G point one point two was added to the draft comments after the public hearing, and that policy just reaffirms that the A S P will be used in conjunction with any other relevant M D environmental policies in the review of potential development within the A S P area. So those were the main concerns that we heard regarding environment, and we've added that policy to satisfy those concerns.
So then, yes.
Yes, the short version is yes.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you. Any other? Okay, I'll. I'll call for the vote. Okay, Carrie, looking for third? Yeah, Councilor Fedeav, thank you.
I'll make motion for.
Thank you, Councilor Fedeav, for making this motion that bylaw number eighteen sixty-eight be given third reading. Any discussion on this? Okay, I'll call for the vote. That's Carrie, thank you. On to nine point three point three.
Administration has been working on a review and update of the Chicken Hill Lake Area Structure Plan to ensure that the plan is consistent with the Municipal Government Act, current practices, municipal policies, and community aspirations. As all municipal A S Ps are established by council through bylaw, administration is proposing bylaw number eighteen sixty-nine for second and third readings, which will repeal and replace the previous bylaw number eight thirty-six Chicken Hill Lake Area Structure Plan passed in nineteen eighty-two. Part seventeen of the M G A allows municipalities to adopt area structure plans which have the purpose to establish the following guidelines within a designated area: general land use patterns, proposed sequence of development in the area, the overall density of population, transportation networks, and a general framework for municipal services. The review and update of the Chicken Hill Lake A S P was initiated in February twenty twenty-four with assistance from the community consulting firm Urban Systems. Data was compiled and a draft A S P was completed for public engagement on February twenty-ninth of twenty twenty-four, and in-person A S P area landowner engagement event was scheduled and completed. The amended Chicken Hill Lake A S P reflects input from the community focused on the following themes: one, to preserve the functionality of agricultural operations; two, to protect environmentally sensitive areas and the natural features that surround the lake; three, to maintain a sustainable access that considers the overall impact of the health of the lake; and four, to maintain a focused vision when considering new growth and development opportunities. First reading of bylaw number eighteen sixty-nine was approved on by council on June eleventh, twenty twenty-four. A public hearing was held on July ninth, twenty twenty-four. Once adopted, the Chicken Hill Lake Area Structure Plan will be distributed in accordance with the M D Public Notification Bylaw. It is administration's recommended action that bylaw number eighteen sixty-nine, being a bylaw of the Municipal District of Bonneville number eighty-seven, to adopt the Chicken Hill Lake Area Structure Plan, be given second reading.
Thank you. Somebody like to make a motion to give second reading? Yes. Okay, thank you, Councilor Kravjak, for making this motion, that bylaw number eighteen sixty-nine be a being a bylaw of the Municipal District of Bonneville number eighty-seven to adopt the Chicken Hill Lake Area Structure Plan to be given second reading. Any discussion, gentlemen? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. That's Carrie, looking for third reading. Councilor Fedeav, thank you for making this motion that bylaw number eighteen sixty-nine be given third reading. Any discussion, gentlemen? Okay, call for the vote. That's Carrie, thank you.
Thank you.
On to nine point three point four. Morning.
Good morning. So I have bylaw number eighteen seventy, which is a roadway licensing bylaw for first reading. Administration is seeking approval for roadway license bylaw number eighteen seventy, authorizing the M D of Bonneville into an agreement to license a portion of the road allowance and road plan one eight one zero E U in accordance with policy number three eight point zero one eight, as shown on the map that you have on Appendix A. The purpose of this roadway license is to be utilized for access to the S M E two three zero zero four zero for aggregate material extraction in the southeast of twenty-four and northeast of thirteen sixty-three and ten, as well as the northwest of eighteen and southwest of nineteen sixty-three of nine. Copy of the application to license was provided to Infrastructure Services and Agricultural Services for review and recommendation, and there were no concerns. So administration is recommending that council give a first reading to bylaw number eighteen seventy.
Okay, thank you. Councilor Kravjak?
The motion for first reading, thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Kravjak, for making a motion that bylaw number eighteen seventy, being a bylaw of the Municipal District of Bonneville number eighty-seven, roadways licensing be given first reading. Any discussion on this motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. That's Carrie, thank you.
Thank you.
On to nine point three point five.
Administration has been working on a review and update of the Crane Lake Area Structure Plan to ensure that the plan is consistent with the Municipal Government Act, current practices, municipal policies, and community aspirations. As for all municipal A S Ps are established by council through bylaw, administration is proposing bylaw number eighteen seventy-one for first reading, which will repeal and replace the previous bylaw number thirteen forty-one Crane Lake Area Structure Plan, which was passed in two thousand six, and all amendments thereto. Part seventeen of the M G A allows municipalities to adopt area structure plans which have the purpose to establish the following guidelines within a designated area: general land use patterns, proposed sequence of development in the area, the overall density of population, transportation networks, and a general framework for municipal services. The review and update of the Crane Lake A S P was initiated in February of twenty twenty-four with assistance from the community consulting firm Urban Systems. Data was compiled and a draft A S P was completed. The May twenty twenty-four engagement for the Crane Lake A S P was a structured, sorry, was structured as a direct mail out of the updated plan information, as well as an interactive online and paper questionnaire that provided area residents, landowners, and stakeholders the opportunity to provide their perspectives and direct feedback on the proposed direction of the plan update. The amended Crane Lake A S P reflects input from the community focused on the following themes: one, to provide a framework for long-term growth and development of lands; two, to protect the ecological integrity of the lake and the environmentally sensitive areas surrounding it; three, to maintain key direction that reinforces Crane Lake as a local and regional recreation center; four, balance the balanced preservation needs and opportunities for future development without imposing undue financial burdens on the M D. Once adopted, the Crane Lake Area Structure Plan will be distributed in accordance with the M D Public Notification Bylaw. Administration's recommended action is that bylaw number eighteen seventy-one, being a bylaw of the Municipal District of Bonneville number eighty-seven, to adopt the Crane Lake Area Structure Plan, be given first reading.
Thank you. Looking for a motion, gentlemen?
I'll make a motion for first reading.
Thank you, Councilor, sorry. Thank you, Councilor Slipchak, for making a motion that bylaw number eighteen seventy-one, being a bylaw of the Municipal District of bylaw number eighty-seven, to adopt the Crane Lake Area Structure Plan, be given first reading. Any discussion on this motion? Okay, seeing none, I'll call for the vote. That's Carrie, thank you. On to nine point three point six.
All right, last one for me, gentlemen.
All right.
Administration has been working on a review and update of the Highway Fifty-Five Area Structure Plan to ensure that the plan is consistent with the Municipal Government Act, current practices, municipal policies, and community aspirations. As all municipal A S Ps are established by council through bylaw, administration is proposing bylaw number eighteen seventy-two for first reading, which will repeal and replace the previous bylaw number twelve thirty-nine Highway Fifty-Five Area Structure Plan, which was passed in two thousand one. Part seventeen of the M G A allows municipalities to adopt area structure plans which have the purpose to establish the following guidelines within a designated area: general land use patterns, proposed sequence of development in the area, the overall density of population, transportation networks, and a general framework for municipal services. The review and update of Highway Fifty-Five A S P was initiated in February of twenty twenty-four with assistance from the community consulting firm Urban Systems. Data was compiled and a draft A S P was completed. The May twenty twenty-four engagement for the Highway Fifty-Five A S P was structured as a direct mail out of the updated plan information, as well as an interactive online and paper questionnaire that provided area residents, landowners, and stakeholders the opportunity to provide their perspectives and direct feedback on the proposed direction of the plan update. The amended Highway Fifty-Five A S P reflects input from the community focused on the following themes: one, to protect the integrity and and function of Highway Fifty-Five; two, to minimize land use conflicts with within existing development; three, to promote a high standard of design and aesthetics for development along the corridor; four, to protect significant environmental features in their natural state, especially creeks and drainage courses; and five, to accommodate non-residential development that is compatible with adjacent uses and provides employment opportunity to the broader region. Once adopted, the Highway Fifty-Five Area Structure Plan will be distributed in accordance with the M D Public Notification Bylaw. Administration's recommended action is that bylaw number eighteen seventy-two, being a bylaw of the Municipal District of Bonneville number eighty-seven, to adopt the Highway Fifty-Five Area Structure Plan, be given first reading.
Thank you. Looking for a motion? All right. Thank you, Councilor Kravjak, for making this motion that bylaw number eighteen seventy-two, being a bylaw of the Municipal District of Bonneville number eighty-seven, to adopt Highway Fifty-Five Area Structure Plan to be given first reading. Any discussion, gentlemen? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote.
Sir Reeve, I just have a question.
Yeah, go ahead.
Hi, thanks for that. If I don't open up the map, I I expect it to fifty-five to be way longer than it is. So is there gonna be an east and a west area structure plan, or just what we see is what we're gonna get?
Um, through the chair to Councilor Fedeav, uh, from what I know, just what we see here, this is just the first reading, so if there is potential for the public hearing to have changes, we will look at it then.
Okay, sounds good, thank you.
All right, that's Carrie, thank you.
Thank you.
Yep. We're gonna break for lunch because it's arrived, and I don't think we're gonna finish before noon anyway, so at this time, we're gonna.